About the policy that we've developed and the ordinances that are in front of you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the Council for your time. I found that it's somewhat easier to give a high-level overview and then answer questions because there's such a wide range of understanding of what a small cell facility is and how that impacts wireless network. So, as she said, I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless that is designed and looking to develop a complement, rather, its existing wireless network here in the city and surrounding communities by constructing what we call small cells. And small cells does have a pretty wide range of definitions. What we're proposing to install is we've designed, for discussion purposes, I'll say, about thirty small cell nodes, what we call them. So each of the individual small cells' locations is called a node. It's part of a broader polygon. So each of the nodes collectively make up a polygon. And so we've designed about thirty nodes as part of an initial phase in the community to, again, complement and work with the existing, what we call macro cell site infrastructure, which most people are more accustomed to, the rooftops or the antennas on rooftops, communications towers, water tanks and the like. Small cells that we're proposing to develop are utilizing existing other types of infrastructure in the community, including existing utility poles, whether they be electric utility or telco or landline, as we call them, utilities, or a combination of both. And basically, what they consist of is one or more antennas, small antennas, and I say small there, they're typically one foot, two feet high, one foot in diameter, usually less than three, having a volume of less than three cubic feet, which is consistent with most of what other carriers are doing, including AT&amp;T and the like. And we try to identify areas where there's peaks of voice or data usage, place these small cells, and when it's small, it's, so I described the antenna size, but, and that's usually affixed to the top of the existing pole, as we call them.
That would be just like this one.
Exactly. That's a great representation of what we're proposing to do here. So the antennas placed at the top of the pole, typically the existing wood pole is not sized or strong enough to support the proposed equipment along with its primary use of power and telco transmission. So we replace that. We have agreements in place with the utility companies to replace those poles, reattach the existing lines to it. Typically, that pole's placed immediately adjacent to the existing pole. It's usually one that's a little stronger, definitely a little bit taller, to allow for the antennas to be placed above the existing, again, transmission lines, distribution lines, so that there's proper clearance, which is usually about four feet between the top line on the pole and then the bottom of the antennas. So if you were, that photograph you showed there, it's a photo simulation, actually, that's probably about forty-four feet to the top of that antenna, which is pretty consistent with what we're proposing in the area. All of those nodes are still, have the requirement of having power and a fixed landline, fiber-optic backhaul, that we call it, in order to operate the site. So there is, you know, they'll all be metered, powered separately, or metered separately and have a fiber component to them. Along with the antennas, there's typically a equipment cage or shroud attached to the pole, lower on the pole, and that houses the components necessary to operate the site, like radios disconnect, metered power disconnects, and fiber junction boxes and the like. They're very in size, vary a little bit in height insofar as where it's placed above ground to that. That's important to, so that the citizens can't come up and just unlock that cage or box, you know, there's a security concern there. So, but I'd say it varies because, again, it depends on what's existing on the pole or what will be.
That would be the lower one on this.
That would be the lower one. And those are, the FCC's put out some guidelines for those types of siting and design criteria, and we typically stay with under thirty-eight cubic feet for that equipment. So it can be maybe two feet wide, five feet tall, painted to match. We're still trying to determine what's the proper color. Everybody would think naturally that brown would be a good color, but the poles fade and they actually turn gray, so we're looking at grays and blacks that sort of hide, better conceal that equipment. So that's sort of the architecture of what we're proposing to do. Where, one important thing to note that we're finding in the community, so typically those poles are placed in the city's right-of-way, and, which is sort of what we're looking to put in place, is a license-to-encumber agreement similar to your existing utility providers. But what we're finding in the community here is that the right-of-way width is basically fully developed, and some of those poles are placed on the right-of-way line or some even into private property. So the, which is a little bit challenging because then we no longer follow in the right-of-way guidelines, but we now have to secure easements from private property owners to go on that pole because the existing easements only cover the primary usage, which is for power telco. So it's a little bit challenging, but one way we can get around that, or another approach, I don't mean circumvent it, but is we can place new poles in the right-of-way. So we're not utilizing the existing electric infrastructure, but we can place a pole very similar, it just isn't, I mean, primary use is not for power telco, it's for the proposed use of small cell facilities. So they're similar in design and shape, and, but a little more sensitive to where we put those. Certainly, it's a last resort. And, you know, another thing just to touch on real quick is that we are doing everything we can to avoid using the existing light infrastructure in the city. I know that's a big initiative that the administration has in preserving that, and so we're being mindful of that in the areas we're looking to place these.
The Council feels the same.
Yeah, good. So, yeah, we think we can be very successful without that. Other communities actually prefer that, so we're just working in that.
Unless you can do a light pole with it in an area that does not have streetlights currently, that would be an option.
We are open for anything, really. I mean, I'm not the final sayer, and of course, economics and everything come into play. There gets the maintenance, who's doing the maintenance, who's powering it, who owns it, those kinds of things are, can be challenging to determine, but we do that for sure, so.
I'm sure Amanda will take good care of it.
Yes. It's been great to work with, and really, I would say, the best community that we've come into as far as working with and understanding the vision, the need, the benefits, and a long-term view of that, so I thank you for that.
No problem.
So our staff has been working for some months with Verizon Wireless and Smart Link because when they came in and asked to do this, we really don't have a permit process at this time for exactly what they need. So we were trying to think of the best way to handle this and what's the best way to permit it. And we have currently our license-to-encumber process, we call it LTEs for short, and that is for any private utility in our public right-of-way or easement. So if Delmarva Power's running a new service somewhere or Chesapeake Utilities, they fill out an LTE agreement. And these work very well, and we do these very, very frequently. So we thought that it would be nice to add this on to that same process because we already have that permit process in place and it's functioning well. So in your packages is the LTE agreement, and we've added on a whole section of small wireless facilities. It's much longer than many of the other sections because this is very unique and it's different. But essentially, like Tucker was saying, our preference is actually not to attach it to our light poles for a wide variety of reasons. Our smaller ornamental poles, like on Main Street, just really cannot handle something like this at an added height. You know, and even our Cobra Head poles, the more we started looking into it, the bases of our poles just were not designed to handle this. And we have asked for our poles to be black and to look like the style of our ornamental pole when they put a new small cell on. So ultimately, when we change out all the streetlights in town and we have these nice black poles, these will fit in with the look of that. But we didn't also want to just have one pole on a street of older poles. You know, if they were coming in and replacing one pole, we thought that would actually be kind of bizarre for many years. And also, when we have to replace a streetlight, say it gets hit by a car or something else, we have to do that very quickly and efficiently, and it's easier for us if that's the only equipment on that pole, that it's our equipment. So that's the way we have presented this, is that it would, these facilities would not be installed on any city-owned poles, so they would put in their own poles. We've specified height requirements and ways to get a variance if the height's not tall enough, same for spacing requirements, a minimum of 500 feet apart, which, if you look in the package, they have spaced them much, much, much greater apart than that.
I was, that was one of the questions I had because my misunderstanding was that they had to be reasonably close.
Yeah, so these are actually, I mean, when Tucker said thirty, that covers all of the city of Salisbury. So they're spaced very far apart. However, if AT&amp;T comes in, they can't be within 500 feet of one of their facilities. So I, part of the reason that spacing is there is if they put one on the corner of Main and Division, I don't want AT&amp;T to go on the other side of Main and Division, you know, to prevent something like that from happening.
Amanda, before we go too further, more further down this road, I want to go back to the poles. How about Delmarva Power poles? Are they putting them on those poles?
So they would have to get Delmarva Power's approval. We, and that's part of what you're talking about.
Do you mean from light poles or utility poles?
The light poles, because we don't want them on our light poles. So if you put them on Delmarva Power light poles, and we have some poles that are intermingled with our city poles.
Yes, definitely.
So as far as aesthetics are concerned, are you planning on putting them on Delmarva Power poles?
We are trying to not, just because you don't want to, for the reasons you state, you can't tell who's and who's, and that's great. It makes it hard for us, but.
Because then you will have one pole that has an extra additional four feet, I think it was, and then two poles, now maybe the city pole, and that'll kind of aesthetically look a little strange. Now, trying doesn't mean no.
No, I'm not, I would, we've not come across any in these thirty-two that we're looking at. Yeah, we've not. And that's, again, from having the benefit of early conversations.
Yeah.
You know, we've steered away from that.
Okay.
You know, maybe in the future, it's worth discussing, you know, things can evolve and change, and those tend to be in more industrial or commercial-type areas where it's not as impacting aesthetically. But as of now, no, we're not looking at it. And before, I would instruct my team and staff to, and I have, to not do that. If we found that that was the only solution, we'd certainly come in and discuss it and see if there were other options before.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Can I just chime in to build on what Ms. Blake just brought up? It's a really good point for two additional reasons. And this may very well be looking forward to future telecommunications companies, not just our relationship with Verizon. But one of those reasons is that we may very well want to acquire, and that is in the planning stages, that pole from Delmarva Power. And two, we have done some planning about which corridors we want the aesthetic light in first, the city standard light in first. So we might want to look at those corridors as exclusive zones where we don't want the poles, even if Delmarva Power owns it, to include the device.
So another element of this that's different for us is charging fees, application fees as well as installation fees and annual fees. So the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, put out an order for a guidance document essentially for the country to use, so look at this. So the FCC order set reasonable limits for all these different fees, and essentially we would like to propose to go with those same reasonable limits. We don't have any reason to look to increase those, they seemed more than reasonable for us. So essentially, there would be an application fee, and the fee would be $500 for up to five small cells, and then an additional $100 for each additional wireless facility that's added beyond those five. So that's the fee for us to review and process the application. Then after that, there's also the ability to charge compensation for access to our right-of-way, and the initial installation is $1,000 per pole. So for every new pole, we would get a $1,000 fee, as well as a $270 per year, per facility installed, annual fee. So I'll give you an example. They were talking about thirty, but I just did an example off of ten. So if they were coming in with ten poles, they would pay the $500 application fee for five of those, an additional $500 for the next five, yep, total, so a $1,000 application fee, $1,000 each to install them, so that's $10,000. So right up front, it's an $11,000 fee, and then we would have $2,700 of annual fee on top of that in perpetuity while those are there. The license-to-encumber does outline removal if the facilities are not used, they would have to come down within a certain amount of time, so that is addressed as well. So there's two different ordinances that you have in front of you. One is to give approval for us to have these regulations as part of the license-to-encumber that would be administered by this department. The second ordinance would be allowing us to amend this year's fee schedule so that we could accept fees in FY '20. It sounds like Verizon is getting close to ready to go, so I think they will want to proceed before we hit FY '21. So we wanted to make sure we had the fee schedule in place this year, this fiscal year. Did you have any more feeling when they wanted to?
We have, no, we do have a few in, where we're sort of approaching the final stages of design, working it out with Dominion, and probably in the next six weeks, we'd have a few applications ready for a preliminary review to make sure it met the standards. There's some other design criteria in the LTE that really covers everything, and it covers it well, it's just we're not, we didn't want to take those steps till we finalized it. So I would say, yeah, six or eight weeks, and we're probably have a couple of applications ready to come in for review.
A couple other questions. I see here there is a provision for, like, an abandoned pole. They have so many days, I just keep scrolling up and down, I think it's like 180 days.
Yes, so they must remove that pole within 180 days of abandonment, and if they do not, then the city may remove it and then recover their costs, yes.
Okay, and just one other thing I just want to ask about, I know we're talking about these poles and everything, and going into, looking at expansion, you don't have any plans on, like, targeting private property, is that correct, for to put your small cells?
Well, not targeting, per se. Some of the best candidates for areas are existing utility poles, but they're situated on private property, so we're.
If they're on somebody's roof or somebody's deck.
No, no, no. We are, there is one that is a, it's a Verizon store, and I apologize, I don't know the address offhand, where it's a small cell rooftop facility, which would be outside of the guidelines of this, it'd be similar to your macro or large-scale ordinance of those requirements.
Just for clarity, and I thought I saw it, I just found it. How many units are there?
I think you're proposing thirty.
Thirty-eight according to this.
Thirty, okay. They have not actually made application yet.
I think a couple have fallen out, so sequence goes up to thirty-nine.
Oh, okay, so this was a preliminary.
Exactly.
I was wondering, I was going to say, there were some numbers missing.
As we nail down or lock in locations, sometimes it eliminates the need for the adjacent ones. So that's why I didn't want to say for certain it's thirty-two, but I think that's where we're at now.
We've asked them to hold off on applying until we have the procedures in place.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, development or building structures after everything's set up, impact on additional cells, cell requirement, is that?
You mean?
Based on, let's say, somebody puts a 12-story building.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying. Oh, yes, and it changes the need.
And it changes the.
The space, the physical space, yeah, yeah, the operation of the network.
Yeah, what happens.
Good point. And that happens a lot in the more urban areas with redevelopment and, you know.
We're doing a little of that.
Yeah. With, so I'm not an RF engineer, but I just speak from experience in working in the industry now 20 years. I, it may, so I doubt that, say, a macro site or a large scale on top of that would meet the needs of the evolving networks, and as we get from 4G into 5G, and that's a, you know, a whole other discussion, but it could lead to the need for more sites because of that. And it's probably not from a signal interruption perspective, it's probably more so because it's driving usage there, right? If you're building, there's more congregation, more commerce and all of that, so we would need to adapt the network to handle that.
And then the process for that would be covered?
Same process.
By the same process, it's just another.
Come back in and apply.
Fine.
Amanda.
Yes.
For terminology's sake, I just want to make sure I get this right, because I'm not an engineer, I'm just a little social worker, so. The proposed pipe, is pipe and pole one of the same term?
So anything that they would need to run underground, because they do need electric to these sites.
Okay.
So they would be responsible for everything that they would need associated with it.
Okay.
So they may, they may actually, we may have a license-to-encumber with Delmarva Power to run electric, and a license-to-encumber with Verizon for the pole. I mean, there may be multiple permits that go into them actually getting all of these sites set up.
Okay.
Because I think you needed fiber optic.
It's a great point, yeah. But, yeah, there's, that supporting infrastructure is all underground and probably subject to the existing agreements they have with the city.
Okay.
What's, how long would it take for you to get this whole thing completed, do you think?
That's a, wow, that's a good question. At the stage we're in now, in knowing where we are, even at the, what I would consider the latter start of the, or phase of the design stage, we're probably still looking at a couple of years to do it. You know, we're one carrier out of three, possibly four, depending upon how things go, and we compete for resources with those, so.
So these wouldn't be shared with other networks or?
No, that's a technology limitation, actually. We can deploy 4G, which is what everybody enjoys now from a coverage perspective, and do the shared infrastructure on small cells, but when you evolve to 5G, it's just too limited, you can't, it's got to be separate, and that's why the.
So no other companies have approached the city for this small cell, so Verizon is, okay.
But we tried to write this generically enough and following the FCC order that it would apply to anyone.
In case anything else comes up, okay.
And this is matching what is being done around the state with other municipalities who have already, but we've, we've kind of made some changes to fit our needs.
To fit ours, yes.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
I have, I've had this conversation with Amanda already, but there will be a future component to this. As you've heard tonight, there's going to be some of these possibly on private property.
Yeah.
So there's, not only this code, you know, or these rules need to be amended, but we're going to need to make an addition to the zoning laws to reflect whatever, you know, similar restrictions when it happens to be on private property.
I would assume that that's under the code revision thing that we're doing, that should come up in that, right, Ann?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And should we look at how it affects, like, the historic district and all that stuff as well?
Most places do.
And we're also subject, as being FCC licensed, we're subject to historic siting requirements and things like that, I suppose.
Any other questions?
Well, Amanda, it's fantastic work, and I just think that your time and dedication to this shows. Thanks.
I feel good, Amanda, as long as she's sitting there, you're in good shape.
I, like I said, it's been wonderful working with her and their staff and everybody, and it's just refreshing to have somebody that doesn't need overcomplicate it, understands the value of it, and it's just, it's been great.
Good.
Look forward to continuing to work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Tucker.
Yeah, of course, thank you. Yeah.
All right, next up on the agenda is South Division Hole Drive Annexation Introduction. Mr. Holland, would you introduce your guest, please?
Yes, sir. I have Mr. Donald Long, he's a petitioner, owner of the property that's requesting annexation.
Okay.
His property's on the northeast corner of Hall Drive, South Division Street, contains approximately a little over an acre of land. His request, annexes property, wants to be developed, the concept plan includes two townhouse-type buildings, each with five units in them, it also includes a stormwater management area, dumpster pad. What will change on the plat, the city will be annexing that portion of South Division Street that fronts along the property, because the city, all the way down, see the west side of South Division Street, all the way past Milford Street, will be annexing that little portion of South Division Street. There's a property line on the east side of the property which will be removed through subdivision. The next phase for this, we're first asking the council's approval to move forward with this, and the next phase would be taking the property, or taking this annexation to the Planning Commission to get rezoned. And from there, we'll work with our consultant, Mr. Sullivan, and to come up with an annexation agreement and approve the concept plan.
It's been there a long time.
Yeah.
Questions from the council? Okay, no questions.
So, move forward.
Do you have consensus?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry, that's what you need to do. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I just want to say, and I think it should be said to everyone who petitions for annexation and wants, you know, to come into the city, we thank you, and thank you for investing in your property and in our community. We appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Excited, excited for you.
Welcome.
Have a good evening.
Okay, next up, we have the accepting and donation of a semi-trailer. Mr. Stevenson, it's great to see you.
Long time no see. How's everyone?
Good.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, the Department of Field Operations is requesting that the council accept a donation of a semi-trailer from Purdue Farms. We'll be using that trailer to store the Christmas tree and the displays from Winter Wonderland. In the past, we've had to borrow the trailer, take it to the farm, unload it, go back and get it, so this will help to. so this will, uh, help to minimize those trips and also prevent tear on the equipment. So I'll come bearing gifts.
Thank you. It's very good.
Well, we remember that when you come and ask for money.
May not be the same value, but, uh...
Yeah, I feel like, probably not. Any questions or comments from the council? Do you have consensus?
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Tom, I'm sorry that I don't know the answer to this, but do you have a, do you have a location on, uh, the, at the yard where you intend to keep this?
We do have a space for it, but we're gonna try to put it back at the Holloway Farms.
Who you are? Okay, just, just move it back to there?
Thank you. Okay.
All set, thank you.
Next up, we have a, accepting a forfeited vehicle to be used by the police department. Colonel's not here, but I, we have our representative.
This is the answer to my question in front of the last meeting.
Okay.
Hey, I'm Sergeant Popovich with, uh, Salisbury. How's it going? Dean Popovich.
Very good.
You don't know what you just walked into.
Yeah, you got a...
Council President Bodas County.
I apologize if I don't have the, um, answer for you right now, but I'm here.
No, don't worry about it.
Well, no, we got the answer today. Oh, the answers today.
Oh.
The vehicle that was in an accident, we were questioning, what's he gonna drive, a bike? But I guess apparently not.
Nothing at this point.
Could you slide it up to be closer to the mic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it will, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, we have little notes and everything, too, so.
We can move the chair up.
Speak into it. Speak loudly.
All right.
Okay, what do you got for us?
Uh, the Salisbury Police Department has recently, um, forfeited a vehicle, which was, uh, involved with a drug seizure. Um, the defendant has, um, given the Salisbury Police Department the vehicle in, uh, regards to obviously, uh, lesser sentence. Um, we're requesting a two thousand eighteen Toyota Tacoma. The vehicle is valued at approximately, uh, thirty thousand dollars. It does have slight damage, which is, um, um, which I think was requested for around five thousand dollars to get fixed, and this vehicle will be used for, uh, all kinds of operations, whether it be undercover operations every day, just, um, uh, transportation to get property moved and so forth. So, we have a couple other vehicles that are definitely showing their age at this point.
Yeah.
In the, the letter, it says it's, uh, valued at thirty-five, and it looks like it needs approximately seventy-five hundred dollars' worth of, of work for damage? Prior to being inspected?
It does, seventy-five.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, and I apologize for those numbers.
No, no, I just want to make sure that we have the right number, that was right, that's all.
You have it on top of your head.
You have the money in there to fix it, in your budget, you know?
I, I can't answer for you now, but I can get that for you.
Okay, just let us know. Any issues from the council? Okay.
None.
You got it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My up next as well?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, got two. This is an important one.
Yes, yes, it is.
This is an important one.
Yes, it is.
Okay, what else you got?
Um, I have, uh, we're accepting funds for a canine, um, bulletproof vest. Um, I apologize again, I, I don't have much information, I, I overheard some, um, overheard some conversations about a group that was, um, gonna be providing us with bulletproof vests for these canines, which is long overdue, and I believe we have the chance to make this happen now. I apologize, I don't have all the details.
It's just a canine group?
Yeah, and they've been in touch with you.
Yeah, yep.
And, and I, I think, uh, this is the sort of thing that we'll see until we're fully equipped. And, and I don't know what the replacement schedule would be for a, a bulletproof vest for a canine, but, um...
Do all our canines have them now?
No, we do not.
I don't think so.
How many are we short?
Um, I, I'm not with the canine unit, um...
Can you find out and let me know?
Yes, I can, yeah.
All right, we have any questions or consensus to get it?
I agree totally, it's wonderful.
The old doggy's got us.
Thank you. I apologize.
No problem.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for covering.
Have a good evening.
Be safe. Next on the agenda, text amendment for critical areas to set fees in amended code language.
Yeah?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Until recently, our critical area local program was administered through the county, and then once the Department of Infrastructure and Development was formed, the critical area staff thought it would be an appropriate time to change that and let the city, now that we're staffed up, to administer the city's own program. In order to make that official, it requires a text amendment, and that's what we're here for. So, that text amendment, as you know, um, goes to the planning commission first at a public hearing, and then it comes to this body for an additional public hearing. The planning commission's hearing was held on the nineteenth of December of two thousand nineteen, and we're here for introducing it, and then it'll be a public hearing, I think, come on the twenty-fourth, okay? Basically, it's allowing us to collect fees, review fees, and fee in lieu of, and those kinds of fees, and it also, um, has changed the names, um, so it's more of a housekeeping, but the most important piece is that it does allow us to collect fees.
So nothing, nothing's changed in the execution?
No, nothing has changed in the execution, except that they come through our office, we make a submittal to the Critical Area Commission instead of going through the county's planning office.
Gotcha. Any questions?
And then we can add this to the fee schedule at budget time, our typical, our, our entire city.
Okay. Questions, comments, problems, consensus?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Next up is, uh, Amanda, you're back. Airport water main agreement.
Good morning, Dallas.
Good morning, Dallas. Nice having you.
Hey, for those that don't know, this is Dallas Baker, the Director of Public Works for Wycomico County.
Hello.
So we are here to talk about the airport water main agreement. And as you've probably heard, the county is running, or proposing to run a water main out to the airport to connect to our municipal system near Warwick Community College. So we have spent a long time talking through options of how it's best to own and operate this pipe. And so what you have before you, this agreement, is the consensus that we've come to, and, and I can let Dallas speak to it a little bit, too, but this has been joint with Infrastructure and Development, Water Works, and Field Operations, because Water Works would actually operate the chlorine booster system. Field Operations Utilities Division would, would operate and maintain the water main, and the Department of Infrastructure and Development was responsible for reviewing all the plans and making sure it met all our construction standards. So this project is funded through grants and loans through the state of Maryland. So it was important for us that the county own the water main while there is any financial obligations. So we, we started, some of the earlier versions had shown that if, for some reason, they defaulted on the loan, we would have to take over. Obviously, that's not language that would sit well for the city, so the way this is written now is that the county will own that water main until they are done paying off the loan. The city would then take ownership, but from day one, once it's accepted, we would operate it and maintain it as if it was our own. So the airport and all the users there would pay typical water service rates, and all that is identified in the agreement. Um, there are rates already established for the Warwick Community College District, so they would pay those rates, they are out-of-town rates, they are not, um, annexed at this time. And let me hit a couple other highlights before I turn it over to Dallas. So the city, um, our engineering staff has reviewed all of the plans. We had a technical review meeting with the county and their consultant, so they have addressed any technical comments that we had. It's very important to note that this water main, in the eyes of the state of Maryland, is a denied access line. So when the, when the state provided funding, they are not trying, trying to promote growth along this entire corridor. The state is providing very specific funding for the use at the airport. So, you know, people in Kilburnee or anywhere along Wallston, Switzerland, there is no tapping in. If, if, if way in the future someone wants to tap in, there is going to be a long approval process through the state of Maryland, and it's really beyond the city or the county's control. So, um, so I, I wanted to make sure I made that point.
There are fire hydrants along the way, though, which is...
Yes, there will be fire hydrants along the way. So typically, when it, we were handling this kind of like a development project, and typically, we would charge inspection fees for a project under construction. We are waiving them because the county has hired a third-party inspection company, so we reviewed their scope of work, it is a company we've dealt with before, so we have waived those inspection fees, which would have been incredibly significant, I think it was close to three hundred thousand dollars, so, but, but that would have swamped us. We would have had to have hired a company to do this inspection. So as connections are made, they would pay typical connection charges, their, they would pay capacity fees and other fees associated with connection. And another important thing to note is that this is a long dead-end water main, so we will have constant flushing of the line. We need to make sure we're keeping the water quality at proper levels. So one of the things that we negotiated is that we would like to put a meter on the end of the line to meter the flushing, and that we will charge them that, as, as we would their regular water fees. So they will pay for any water used during routine flushing on a quarterly basis. So I will say on behalf of Water Works, it was very important to Cory that they maintain the chlorine booster system, because chlorine's being fed into the system. And essentially, she's responsible for the entire water system. So, we know, at the beginning, we talked through many, many options. The county could have looked to have hired an outside operating company, but that would have been difficult for us to reconcile how to do that and still be able to maintain that responsibility. Anything you'd like to add, Dallas?
Uh, no, just if you're not familiar with the product, product, project, um, you know, we're extending the water main down to the airport primarily for, uh, two reasons.
Fire service.
Fire service, and also, um, currently, they are on old wells out there, um, so we're looking to, to serve the existing buildings with a, you know, reliable water source. Also, um, you know, the, the water line is being extended out to the airport's Commerce Park. We're actively working with several companies to bring in some, you know, potentially high-paying jobs into the area. Um, so we're, we're looking at this really from, uh, the, the first step in a large economic driver for the region. So, you know, as that airport industrial complex begins to fill out, hopefully some of that flushing will, the need for that will go away. But right now, we don't have a whole lot of users out there at that end.
Well, the flushing you're gonna need for fire service anyway, because they're gonna have to report that the lines are clear.
Well, and, and a lot of that will depend, like Dallas said, if there's huge users that are constantly using that main, we won't have to flush it quite as much, so we'll, we'll monitor, like we do everywhere in the city. We'll, we'll keep an eye on that. I will mention that, um, the airport is currently served with a sanitary sewer from the city, so there were pump stations added, I guess in the sixties, I believe, to, to serve them with sewer, but as Dallas mentioned, they're on private wells. Um, back in that day, that was under Urban Service District Code, which is no longer in our code. So, um, the way the code is written is that to have water service, they would need to sign a pre-annexation agreement. This is something that's still being negotiated separately outside of this operating agreement, but I did want to bring it up, because I'm not asking you necessarily to advance this to legislative session yet until the county council takes action on both this operating agreement and pre-annexation. But I did want to bring it in case you had any big questions or concerns, because we worked on this for a very long time, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a complicated thing.
Yes.
Just as an aside, uh, fire pressure, water pressure.
So we're, the way it's working in the agreement, we're, the, the city is providing a minimum, I believe, twenty PSI, and if there is going to be, um, a, a fire suppression system at a particular building at the airport, they will have to provide their own, their own pump, their own tank, yeah.
That's a very important thing to know, yes.
You, you get it there for flushing toilets and letting us drink out of it, and we'll take care of the rest.
That was my, that was my reason for answering, make sure there's no misunderstanding.
Absolutely, and that, and that is why we put it in this agreement, because depending on the size of a, a huge airplane hangar or something else to get the right pressure to sprinkler heads in the top of the building, and so we wanted to make it clear that if they're providing fire protection in a building, they will still have their own pump.
Perfect. Questions from the council?
Good thing happening for the airport.
Fully supportive.
Yeah, absolutely, it's amazing, it's come to sparks.
Yeah.
Really great, great progress.
Yeah, I don't want to muddy the waters, um, because, uh, you know, I couldn't agree more. Um, this document is clear, and, um, you know, as, a lot of work has gone into it from Dallas's team and Amanda's team. Um, I, I want to add that, if any of you were privy to the county council meeting last week, you might have seen, um, a lot of discussion, not about the contents of this agreement, but the, um, pre-annexation agreement and whether or not that would happen and what effects that might have. A lot of, um, information that wasn't exactly accurate about the effects of annexation, but to be clear, at least from my position, and I would imagine this council would agree, um, that there's no interest in annexing the airport, uh, or a road to the airport from the city, uh, certainly not on my part, um, and I imagine, again, that you all agree. And so at some point, we're gonna have to cross that bridge, working with the county council and the county executive on the pre-annexation agreement, or finding, you know, whatever mechanism we need to get there. But again, I wanted to, um, put on the record that there's no interest in annexation, and, um, in fact, I see that as a, a tremendous cost burden to the city that isn't advantageous to us in any way, um, and, uh, would only be, uh, I think, an impediment to the good work that we want to do by, uh, fueling the, the airport with some growth potential, or additional growth potential.
Yep.
Very good.
Good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dallas.
Thanks for your work on it, to both of you.
Thanks. I'm still here for a couple of words.
I know.
I see this.
You keep taking up more of our meetings. Next, we have, uh, the acceptance of Maryland Bike Ways Grant for Northeast Corridor.
Okay, completely switching gears to Bike Ways.
Completely.
So we had applied for a grant for design and implementation of part of the West Side Bike Network. And I, I have a very small drawing, I, I didn't think to include it in your packet, but essentially, on the west side, we have included bicycle lanes already on a portion of Isabella Street. So we want to build on that, and this would include more of Isabella Street and Lake Street towards Delaware Avenue. So we, we have a contractor that has given us a proposal, so we, oh, yes, absolutely. And, and we're, we'll call this Phase One, because it's not the full area that's shown on that map, but this is, like I said, um, Isabella Street through Delaware Avenue and then on Lake Street. So it would connect some of the schools and parks and playgrounds down into downtown. So the total project cost is a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, and that's design and implementation, that's full construction. So we applied for funding through the Maryland Bike Ways Program, and we were proposing the match of the pavement money. So our match is seventy-four thousand dollars, that's partially in-kind work, and that's also paving these streets before we add the bike lanes. So the grant that we've received is a hundred thousand dollars, that will help finish design. We had done preliminary design to be able to submit the application. So that will finish design as well as then do construction. So the Maryland Bike Ways Program has provided us with this grant agreement. It is similar to ones we've received from them in the past. This is actually our fifth grant through Maryland Bike Ways. And then we also have the budget amendment ordinance so that we can utilize these funds. So this is a project that would, um, after these funds are approved, if you accept this grant agreement, continue in design right now in FY twenty, and with a goal to be able to start construction essentially this summer.
So it'll be in the twenty-one budget?
It'll be in the twenty-twenty-one, yeah, so we would accept this, these grants in twenty, because some of design will be spent then, but then construction will lapse into twenty-one. Exactly.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Amanda, can you speak to, um, consistency with the adopted Bike Master Plan?
Yes, so this is all part of the Bicycle Master Plan. This is an area of town where we do see high bicycle usage. What we are proposing is, uh, dedicated bike lanes on both sides of the... What we are proposing is dedicated bike lanes on both sides of the road, similar to what is in the block of Isabella Street from essentially Route 50 to towards Delaware Avenue.
So, it's a share?
It's, oh, no, dedicated lanes.
Oh, it's a dedicated?
Yeah, they have dedicated lanes. So, where we can, there may be some sections of sharers. But what we're trying to do is dedicate one lane on each side. In the block where we installed the water main, we installed dedicated lanes. Yes. So, this will include all the lane markings, signage, route signage with wayfinding. And then, we also replace out inlet grates, so they're bicycle-friendly inlet grates. So, all of that is included in this grant.
Loving it. Loving it.
Any questions?
Loving it. Here's the map. Does anyone want to look at this? I love how we've got West Salisbury Elementary School, Salisbury Middle. It bumps up right against that. We do have a park here, oh, Chipman Elementary, excuse me, a park. This is really nice.
There are definitely a lot of facilities on the west side that connect, and then would bring them into downtown as well.
Yes.
And when we get North Prong Park going, it's right in that same vicinity of the...
That would be, yeah, then...
Focus, focus, focus. Safely bicycle to a park.
Where will the connector be? The balance?
Well, from North Prong, or from Isabella, you could go north and south into North Prong Park. Because North Prong Park will go from the Rose Street Boat Ramp approximately all the way to Route 50.
Okay. So, that will be done, or connected?
So, from, wait a minute. Lake Street Playground.
All the way?
All the way up to just about Salisbury Middle to actually where, um... Would I say Johnson's Park? The new apartment.
Yep, yep, yep.
On one side. Is it one side or both sides?
On both sides.
Only side. Isabella. Okay, that's Delaware Avenue to Lake at Isabella. And then, there's Delaware and West Main. I mean, because my issue is, I have a lot of people in my district that say that, why are they putting these bike lanes? And, you know, I kind of understand, but like I explained to them as well, as much as we have safety for vehicles and pedestrians, we must have bike safety for bikers. You know, and I do try to implement that and explain that to them. We must have safety for everyone. No, you may not. They may not see bikers all the time, but we do have bikers.
Oh, when you go over to, when I go to SMS, I always see bikers.
You see bikers.
Yeah, they, there are a lot of bikers over there. Any other questions?
It's a good thing. I don't have a problem with it at all.
All right, great. Thank you.
Next, we have EDU waiver for 123 Bateman Street.
Okay, and I do want to invite up Mr. Bob Cambar.
Okay.
Hi, how are you?
Thanks for coming.
Yes, nice to meet you. We've talked to you many times. I hadn't met yet.
So, we have before you a capacity fee waiver request. And this is for a property on Bateman Street that was in a warehouse that's been converted to a mixed-use office, retail, and residential property.
Board of Elections were there for a while.
Okay. Yes. Yep, that's the building. So, it looks very different now.
Yeah. Big, big change.
So, right now, this still falls under the capacity fee waiver ordinance that we have from the old linens of the week, that bank of 300 EDS. So, this property is in an enterprise zone, which makes them eligible, and they're redevelopment in an enterprise zone. So, their needs, we, as always, give them credit for existing water use. So, they only need 3.9 EDS. And at our current rate, that's $13,778. So, we had the original allocation of 300. So far, we have used 248 EDS, so we have about 51 available. After this, we would still have 47 available. I am drafting, I'm working through the legislation to come back to you for further, beyond this 300. So, that, I've been working on that. But I did want to say that this project is eligible. Mr. Cambar provided information and his building permits and pictures of his property. And we've gone through this, and it is an eligible project for this capacity fee waiver.
Questions or comments?
What are you turning it into? What are you updating it for?
Student rentals.
Student rentals.
That's the one right by the...
Oh, I see.
Right behind Pat's beach.
About a trike, yeah.
Yeah.
They look nice.
Thank you.
Big difference for athletes that have to run into those fields all the time.
Big difference.
Yes, very big difference.
You turn a corner, you go...
I see, yeah. I see.
We're not through yet. I mean, we're almost finished.
Yeah, looks like it's close.
And we've been talking with someone about, because the city wanted us to have multi-use. So, we're going to have, I'm talking with someone about possibly a bookstore in there and supplies and things. I don't know. I'm just, you know, it's, they seem very interested, so.
Angela, you okay?
I was keeping my...
Yeah, that was my, I just wanted to make sure what that was. It looks great. I think it's a good idea.
No, I know that, but...
On the back? No.
Yeah.
Long time, maybe a long time. Before my time?
No.
Couldn't be before my time. Is there a time?
Was there, was there a say?
Want to stay out of trouble?
I think, by the way. You said it before.
This comes up every meeting. All right. All right. We're good. Thank you, Mr. Cambar. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for appearing.
No problem. Mr. Kitrow, you're up. We have acceptance of small donations and gifts of the city. We're going to handle, we're going to try to handle something we've been talking about since I've been on the council.
Yeah, so it's pretty...
Because the previous council president.
Okay. All right. I can see guns are firing both ways.
We're going to stay out of the line of fire here.
So, this is a pretty easy resolution. We're just modifying. It's a resolution undoing or amending their gift policy that we created. In the packet, you'll notice a draft of the gift policy with some recommended changes. There's a couple other small tweaks that we'll be adding to this draft. Some additional notes from Keith Cordery. But it's nothing that's going to impact the overall purpose of the gift policy. So, just to bring everybody up to speed, we talked about the threshold of up to $5,000 monetary or material. Anything that's at that value or less, we would go through our own gift policy protocol in-house internally. And then, a couple times a year, we would bring forth those people, invite them here to just be recognized formally. As you know, it will speed up the process and eliminate some of those extra smaller donations that are required here. One thing that is noted in here, if there is, if it's a financial contribution, then we would like to expend those funds. We need to go ahead and make sure that that is budgeted in advance. Otherwise, we would have to come forth with a budget amendment. That's the one small piece that we're changing within the policy, outlining that a little bit.
And we'll have that policy before the meeting that we vote on?
Yeah, we just, I don't believe we ended up putting the final in here. We had it last week. It says, what's the packet was already submitted. We just didn't want to have two things. So, it's already been written.
We make sure that we have it before the meeting, like the Thursday or Friday.
I didn't know we had it.
Yep.
Yep, good.
Perfect. Any questions? Something we've talked about for a long time.
We anticipate putting in as a, on the budget line that we accept.
As a placeholder?
Yeah.
So, you could put anything from 20 or $25,000, just to be safe if you have several. I doubt it'll be more than 10, but if we got lucky and got a couple big ones, I'd rather have a little bit more flexibility in expenditure. That's really what it is, but it wouldn't be anything more than 25.
If we exceeded it, we can always...
Yeah, just go back and do them.
Maybe change it, settle it and change it.
And pre, increase it.
We all good?
Yep, yes.
Awesome.
Nice work.
Next up, Ms. Glanz.
Good evening.
Accepting Maryland Department of Planning grant award to the census outreach.
I come bringing, good news. The City of Salisbury was awarded $19,810, the largest grant of municipalities I'd like to share. So, really excited about that. This grant funding will go towards our census outreach efforts for TV, radio, print materials, door knockers, outreach events, things of that nature. And we have pretty much mapped out what that looks like and are in conversations with other jurisdictions to try to do some cost sharing with TV and radio, because we all have the same media market. So, let's be smart about our buying power and things like that. So, creating some good relationships through this process. So, I think we'll get a good bang for our buck.
Your team's been very active. I know that.
Excuse me, was that fake base dinner they had, was that some of the money that was used?
That was not, because we haven't accepted this yet, so we can't expend any of that. I think they got a handful of private donations to help with that.
All right. That's great. That's great.
Which is great.
Any problem accepting the grant?
No, not at all.
MML fought for this after the state had some money left over. And then, they, you know, said, you know, we think we can wisely expend this, and so...
Yeah, and the county got a grant for about the same, $20,000. So, you know, doubling our efforts in the community.
Yeah, we have to take this, every opportunity we have probably between now and the census, we should, Kim, just put a reminder on my, we need everybody to count it.
Yes.
Yes.
It is extremely important.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I was just going to say to Julia's point, and the 20,000 or so that the county has and the 19, 810 that the city, that's all combined in one effort. So, you know, this is a collaborative effort with one body, jointly staffed by city and county and jointly appointed. So, you know, it's one collaborative, not duplicative efforts, but one collaborative effort.
And one thing, just to mark your calendars, March 28th, we are hosting sort of a day of census activities. We'll be setting up camp, if you will, in many of the city neighborhoods and many of the jurisdictions throughout the county, communities throughout the county, calling it sort of a party with a purpose, sort of a cross between National Night Out and our Neighborhood Walks for us and volunteers to get out with the community to knock doors from sort of the local perspective, knowing that the local government level is a more trusted source than our federal government at the moment. So, we'll be out there knocking doors, educating folks on census and why it's important to take it, and then dividing them back to sort of a community gathering picnic, if you will.
What time?
What's the date of that? March 28th, a Saturday, from 12:00 to 2:00.
12:00 to 2:00. And you're going to be in different neighborhoods.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
That completes our agenda.
That was a lot.
Thank you, everyone, for your contribution, and we are...
Thank former city council president and executive director of Greater Salisbury Committee Mike Dunn.
Yes, Mike Dunn.
Mr. Dunn, would you have any remarks that you'd like to make? Now, I knew that was a loaded question right from the beginning.
Yeah, sure.
Some loaded throat clearing.
Any place you feel comfortable, except here.
That's my classmate, too.
That's exactly right. I came here to, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. President. Came here today to listen to the discussion about the airport. I salute the efforts of the City of Salisbury and Wycomico County. This is a challenging thing, but a rewarding thing. I also bring my greetings from executive, I'm sorry, President of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, Bill Chambers, who would be here except he's skiing in Western Pennsylvania. So, I'm taking one for the joint team that, obviously, making this water connection happen. I salute the city attorney, Mark. Thanks for all of your work and Amanda's work, and it's wonderful. And I stuck around so that I could give a hug to the best clerk in the city clerk in the state of Maryland.
Just Maryland?
The United States of America.
Thanks, Mr. Dunn. All right, we are adjourned, folks. Thank you.